Good evening. Since it's summertime, we'll go by this clock this time, but we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the richest land, one nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Strand? Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. It's an interesting week for us in the Health Department. A hundred and fifty-three individuals turned in two-hundred-and-ten pounds of unwanted medications at the Fargo-Cast Public Health. First four of Take It Back Tuesday events on June twenty-seventh. It was kind of interesting that a lot of people actually brought grocery sacks full of medications, which, John, you know, you're not on opioids. It's just amazing how many people have things at home. The event was held with partnership of the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Commission on Addiction. So it was a good turnout, and a lot of people did turn in their opiates, and we did get a good response. The Environmental Health Division at the Fargo-Cast Public Health has issued a warning to the public about increased risk of being infected with HIV or viral hepatitis when body art procedures are being performed by individuals who are not licensed or regulated. So if you're going to get a piercing or tattoo, make sure that people are licensed properly and use proper precautions. Library continues to be busy. The summer reading program continues through August fifth. Upcoming events for kids include a computer coding class, a little pony party, and builders' workshops featuring birdhouses and toolboxes. There will be a Bristol Bot building session for teens, and a digital library open house event, and Brew Your Own series of classes for adults with topics including kebabs, cold brew coffee, and herbal tree. The next Meet Your City Department Leader session is at the library on July twenty-fifth. City Forester Scott Lindahl will talk about the city's forestry department. Are you going to do any hands-on workshop, Scott, or anything?
Probably.
Do some trees or something?
Close example.
Okay. Because I know Ben Dowd, when he had the big equipment out there, he was real popular with the kids, so let's see if you're going to outdo him a little bit. Now, here's a really great thing that the Parking or Planning Commission has come up with. I don't know, Tony, if you had part of this, but hourly parking begins Wednesday, July fifth, at the downtown Roberts Commons Garage. There will be about fifty spaces available, and for the first two hours, parking is free. After that, you'd pay three dollars for two to four hours, you'd pay five dollars for four to six hours, and eight bucks for six hours or more. So it's a great way to use the garage. It's not full. Jim says there's plenty of places for people, and go on top of the roof. It's a great place to see downtown Fargo, right? And now, for just a while, when they start building Block Nine, we'll have a little trouble with the sights to the east, but eventually, right now, it's pretty good-looking. Contact parking and reserve parking are also available for people. Police. Chief Todd wants to give a special thank you to all the people who helped set up and participated in the police picnic last week. The weather was perfect, and there was a huge turnout from the community. He said, "It was nice to see so many on-off duty officers interacting with the citizens and their children." The department received many compliments about how friendly and outreachy the officers are, and Fargo has something special going on in the relationship with the community. I don't know if many of you made it, but it was a great turnout, and people really enjoyed interacting with our police force. Transit. The new and improved fixed route bus services started July first. Several of the route changes are cost-neutral, while some are cost-shared with Morehead, NDSU, and West Fargo, such as Route Twenty-four, which serves the New Sanford Medical Center, Southwest Fargo, and other areas, Costco, and several hotels in West Acres. So transit continues to expand, right, Tony? Even where you're riding that bright tie, huh? Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda emitting item forty-five in the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through forty-one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Going to the regular agenda. Steve Sprague. State Water Commission requests cost reimbursement for FM diversion flood project costs. Total costs are three-hundred-and-one, three-hundred-and-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-four, sixty-two dollars. Steve Sprague to explain.
I'm filling in for Kent tonight, so go easy on me, right? So again, we have the A and B split out. The A part is for the city and diversion-related activity, and then the B part is for the Oxbow. I don't know if there's any questions. When I, when Kent went over this with me, he did say that they're beginning the land purchases, and that's what we're seeing on the, on the city reimbursement side.
Okay. Any questions, Steve?
Move for approval, A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Is there a motion for item B?
Move to approve B.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Christopher Strand.
You know, I'm just going to clarify my vote on this. I've, I've put some thought into it, and I've publicly stated in the past that I had concerns about the Oxbow project, but in retrospect, I don't want to upset the apple cart with decisions previous commissions have made, and I want to respect the process where we're going and asking for funding reimbursement, which is expected, especially in light now that the state has opened their parameters for what they're supporting in our diversion. So, so it's not a surprise when my vote, even though I had questions and concerns, my vote will, of course, be henceforth to, to support this effort to get the reimbursement from the state.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. I think we have to jump to forty-four, am I right, guys? Only one we can do at this time. You have recommendations for appointments and reappointments to following boards and commission? Historic Preservation Commission, Human Relations Commission, Civic Service Commission, Parking Commission, and Special Assessment Commission. You have my recommendations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to, we have one of the applicants in, in the room. Cheryl Shafel is back there, who's being recommended for the Human Relations Commission. It's nice to see you here.
Thank you for attending. On a holiday, almost, huh? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. So now... What? How can we do this? We have to wait till five-fifteen?
Construction update.
Can't start early, Nancy, if nobody's here?
Construction update.
Ah, there are no construction update today. Is somebody prepared to do a construction update? Want to give it to us? We're way ahead, so.
One of the games.
Everybody's had a banner here on construction this year. Well, he went up on there. Isn't that nice?
Yeah. Yeah, so to start off, talk about, well, we'll go back to this first page, sorry. We're not aware of any incidents, any serious injuries or fatalities on any of our projects, which is always great.
You know, John and I had a question about that. There was recent deaths in the state, somebody where a trench came down, a pasta farmer. Does not everybody use, I mean, when we see you guys digging around here, there usually are those, I don't even know what you call them.
Trench boxes.
Trench boxes?
Yep.
Does not everybody use those, or is that not a standard you have to use?
So there are requirements to dig safely. I would say our contractors on our contracts do a very good job at that. Unfortunately, a lot of smaller contractors or private contractors don't do as well with it. A lot of times, you see the, you know, the guy that owns one backhoe and just kind of digs on the side doesn't always dig as safely. It, of course, takes-
So for our city guys that are water leak or something like that, are they always using that safety stuff, so we don't have any concerns about any city employee getting injured like that?
That would really be more something for mains and hydrants or public works, but as far as I know, they typically use them. They're in very confined spaces, so they're typically using trench boxes or sheeting or something.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead, but I just noticed that, John, I hear you did too.
Well, I'm going to chime in with the mayor, if I might. North Dakota is the flagship city of the state, and when we're fifth year in a row for having the most dangerous work record of worker safety in the state, I think it's absolutely paramount critical that we, we keep this messaging going forward, and we keep this as a high standard for, for everybody else, especially our own people in our own projects, our own workers. And down the road, I want more of us, more measure two of previous injuries or deaths to be part of our consideration for bid awards. But it's, it's a significant message, and Fargo needs to set the standard for, for North Dakota, that this is the highest priority.
Very good. Thirty-second Avenue, things are continuing to progress well. There will be some switches going on, as there always are kind of on this project, changing the phasing. On the east side of the project, should be seeing some switching, some removals and underground taking place soon. BR seventeen A one, which is up on Broadway between Fifteenth and Nineteenth, nearly all the mainline concrete pavement is in. So just kind of a note that master construction is on schedule to finish, finish this project almost two months early. They were fortunate with a, a nice spring to be able to get started, and they really, you know, put resources towards the project to get it done quickly, which is great. BR seventeen B, just south of the previous project I talked about on Broadway between Twelfth Avenue North and Fifteenth Avenue North. Dakota Underground is working on the underground utilities, and will be progressing on that project over the next few months. BR seventeen C, this one recently got started just a couple of weeks ago. They've been really at the intersection of Fourth Street and Second Street near the YMCA. We have a lot of utilities that we're installing down there, and there are a lot of small utilities that the contractors had to work around. So that one, again, is progressing nicely, though. There will be temporary access to the YMCA through a temporary road while we continue to work in that intersection. And we've, of course, been communicating with them and the other local businesses in that area with those impacts. Couple pavement management projects that we do annually. Asphalt milling overlay project, the Section One, which is up north, nearly done up there. Section Two, large area, continuing to mudjack, remove and replace curb and gutter sidewalks, and then probably in the next couple of weeks, they'll be moving in with their milling machine and starting the overlay. Asphalt wear course, similar type progress there, fixing some of the curb and gutter and sidewalk ADA ramp, doing those improvements, and then we'll be coming in, and one of the sections, for sure, they've already paved, and we'll be continuing to move along on PR seventeen G one, which is our annual seal coat project. The contractors continuing to put up pavement markings or work on traffic control, and then also just getting set up to, to continue that work. HG seventeen A one, which is our house demo project, continuing to just move along there. Kind of have it color-coded here on, on what has been demolished and what are, what are being moved, and where we're at with that. FM seventeen A one-
Just a question on the removal. I think you've asked many times that happens, but is there some bidding process that goes on? When you say the houses may be removed, is there some process right now they're involved with, so they allow for the bidding?
I don't know how to answer that for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think you asked it on the Oxbow area, and we got a lot of people that took houses out there, so it may be harder to take houses in town, but Nancy, do you have any, is there anything people go through to do that?
The project is bid for demolition, and it's essentially turned over to the contractor.
So it's their-
And the contractor has an opportunity to move or demolish during that period of work.
So we usually do put restrictions on, on what we believe would be able to be moved down the street without tree impacts or things like that. I know there's been some flexibility with that, and that's been brought through PUPAC in the past, but, but yeah, ultimately, like Nancy said, I do believe it is up to the contractor if they're able to move them and, and have a willing buyer. They, they tend to do that, so. Southwood Levy, so, you know, as stated here, the project includes the demo of one house at six oh six Southwood, and construction is starting and moving along nicely. FM fifteen B two, Rose Creek Flood Risk Management Project. Again, they're just, they're ongoing there. There has been some additional work on, on that project that required a detour, and they're, they're working on some water main down on University. BN seventeen F one, this is a new development project on Tenth Street North, north of thirty-second Avenue. They do have a closure on thirty-second Avenue right now to repair an existing water main that broke over the winter. We added that onto this project to have the contractor fix that. So road is closed right now, right, I should say restricted slightly, and hopefully within next week, they should have that back open fully. Nineteenth Avenue North, Forty-Fifth Street I twenty-nine, underground installation continuing. They've been working on subgrade prep on the west side of the project, and they're doing asphalt milling on the east side to continue on that, on that underground there. Again, that, that project is going, going well so far. Twenty-Fifth Street South, the, this project is going to start up on Wednesday. Contractor does have forty-five days to reopen Twenty-Fifth Street, and there is an incentive if they get it done before that. There is a detour setup, as shown on the map here. Hopefully, we can get it open earlier and lessen the impact to our motorists. Quite a few carryover projects, some of the diversion projects, really just continuing some warranty work. Those are the impacts that we've seen on Second Street. The Fourth Street Levy project, really just some cleanup stuff there. ICS was the apparent low and was awarded the contract for the sanitary lift station in the similar area, so you'll see their job trailers remaining there. Second Street Levy, again, just kind of some cleanup going on. Streetlight carryover work, again, minimal traffic impacts there, but the contractor, Morehead Electric, is continuing to work through that area. Twelfth Avenue North, currently no work within the city of Fargo limits. They're still on the west Fargo portion, progressing east towards Fifty-seventh Street, probably a couple of months yet before they get into that new roundabout construction. BN sixteen C, up north on Twenty-Fifth Street North, the street construction is, is in progress right now. Curb and gutter probably later this week, and then asphalt paving shortly after that. BN sixteen J, the, this project turned out really well. Underground went in this year. Just recently, the concrete pavement went down. That'll connect up to our new Nineteenth Avenue North, west of Forty-Fifth. Couple of private projects of note. Main Avenue lane closures between Fifteenth Street and University Drive. I think this one should hopefully be done soon if it, if it hasn't finished up by now, And again, just Second Street work, that just punchless remaining there.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioner?
Just one, the Twenty-Fifth Street project from Main Avenue to Second Avenue South, does that include that crossing on that railroad?
It does.
That when you go over it, you lose a shock absorber or two?
Yep. Yep, it's really bad. So we, we were trying to work with the railroad last year to get that done, and we weren't able to, but it is going to be addressed as part of this project.
It's gotten pretty bad.
And, yeah, so that was the main reason for that project, but there is a small segment of pavement that was kind of left over with the Main Avenue project, never replaced up to the railroad, and further south, there's a small segment that was left over, so addressing that.
Very good. We will go into public hearings. Public hearing item forty-three A. Steve Sprague has asked, have this, it's a special assessment on sewer repairs, and he's asked to continue this until five-fifteen on Monday, August fourteenth. Steve, you want to explain?
Both A and B, we were just a little bit overzealous. We got it on the agenda just a couple of months too early here. We have it advertised actually coming up Monday for public hearing on August fourteenth, so just ask that you continue it until August fourteen.
Can I have a motion for both A and B, please?
Move to continue.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item forty-three C, transfer of Class FA Golf alcoholic beverage license from RBT Investments doing business to Nine Iron Bar and Grill to B C Z Osgood Holdings doing business, Nine Iron Bar and Grill at forty-four zero zero Clubhouse Drive South. Steve Sprague to explain.
We had quite a bit of discussion at, at Liquor Control on this one. We had three applicants. All of the applicants did have some history, some criminal history, some involving alcohol. Some of the history was rather dated, but it still, you know, brought us, brought forth discussion on it, and what we ended up with was a recommendation that the transfer be approved on the condition that there be no further incidents regarding alcohol in any, any sort by any of the three applicants, and also that there be no additional criminal activity by the three applicants. And it was a two-year probationary period or two-year period to look back.
So anyone present wishes to address the commission regarding this transfer? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Question first. You say dated. A year, five years, ten years?
Some back even fifteen years, but, but still worthy of note, and so we wanted to just make sure that we are setting a level of expectation with this alcohol license.
I'll move to approve, and then I'll just-
Mr. Pepcorn?
... comments, Mr. Chair. So the, it's a park district property, and so they're, they're going to be investing about two-hundred-thousand dollars, a significant amount, into the property, and so basically the owner, basically, if he has any more problems, he has a lot to lose. And so I believe he's changed his ways. The chief had some serious concerns. A lot of these things were way, way in the past, and some of the things were related to JT, JT Cigaro, but it was mostly that past owner, and he is not involved in this group. The past owner has, was the main instigator of having a lot of the difficulties, and so I would say that these gentlemen were workers for him, and they did have some things, but they were in the past. So I'm comfortable Steve will be the one monitoring the two-year probation, and so it's basically if they have any issues or the, or the premises has any issues, then they would lose their, lose their right. And so I'm comfortable with it, and Tony was on there, too, and we had a good discussion. It's very difficult, but, but I think it, I think it was a good resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just another question, and so if something does occur, you have the authority to shut it down, or does it come back here?
It would come back here. Any, any sanctions to the license that would come to that magnitude would come back before this body. There would be a public hearing.
And you could revoke the license?
We can do whatever we want. We can take away.
Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, I thought there was.
And just to point out, it was a five-o vote after we discussed those, that idea of it being somewhat appropriation. Even the chief said that was, that sounded acceptable.
Any other questions on this issue? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item D, transfer of alcohol, transfer of Class AB alcohol beverage license from Douglas Demirck to Nestor to Mom's Kitchen at Tailgater Sports Cafe at thirteen twenty-two Main Avenue. Steve Sprague to explain.
So on this one, there was a little less discussion. It's not quite as contentious as the other one, but this is a unique factor in it also. So the Nestor has, the building itself is owned by Kilborn Group. The lease expires sometime around year end, and the group that has the Tailgaters worked out an arrangement to purchase the license from Doug Demink. Doug owns the, the business, but once he loses his license, or loses his lease, he's not going to have a, a place to do business anymore. So it's, it's Doug's intention to retire at the end of the year, but we're going to, we're asking to approve the transfer now, and then they'll consummate the transfer at the end of the year. So that's, that's the little bit-
Doesn't Tailgaters already have a license? What do they do?
They do, yes. So Tailgaters currently has a license that they'll continue operating under. It's an FA license. At the end of the year, they will either look to open a, you know, a new restaurant using that license, or see if they can sell it to somebody else that may be interested in opening a new restaurant.
Mr. Garrick?
And of note, the AB license is the, is the big license that everyone wants, right? It's the on-sale bar and off-sale. So not that I have any concern about, about this, but just everyone's aware that this is the very highly coveted license that's going to be going over there to Mom's Kitchen.
And you have no idea what value it had?
Well, it's free market, basically, value. We, we sell it or get it out there for hundreds, some thousand dollars, and once you own it, which is an issue that I think we should address, but they're able to go out and sell it for as much as someone will pay them for it, so.
Contingent on our approval.
Right.
Contingent on our approval.
Any man present who wishes to speak about this transfer? Anyone present who wishes to speak? We'll close public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Garing and Pepcorn. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item B, Morton and Dottie's addition, approval recommended by Planning Commission six-six-seventeen, zoning change, change from limited commercial to limited commercial with a PUD, planned unit development overlay. First reading of rezoning ordinance and planned unit development master land use plan. Don Crest to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Crest with the Department of Planning and Development. As the mayor stated, item forty-three E is a zone change with planned unit development. The property is located at fourteen, thirteen forty-five South University Drive. The applicant proposes to establish a vehicle repair use on this site. This is in the LC, limited commercial zone, and, and in that zone, vehicle repair uses are limited to a fifteen-thousand-square-foot lot. That's the maximum size you can have. This applicant, the intent of these applications is to allow vehicle repair use on a twenty-one-thousand-square-foot lot, which is the size of this lot, within the LC Limited Commercial zoning district. Planned unit development will modify the maximum site area restriction and will allow the vehicle repair use on the twenty-one-thousand-square-foot lot. There's the visual with the air photo there. The project was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on June sixth, two thousand and seventeen. The recommendation is stated in your staff report, there's the proposed site, and shown on your screen. The applicant's representative, Clay Lexon of Lowery Engineering, is with us tonight and may wish to address, address the commission. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Don't they sell cars there now? What are they changing?
That's vehicle sales use. It's a vehicle, they're changing to a vehicle repair use, sir.
Okay. Is anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this change? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this change? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg, Gareg. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gareg?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item F, Schat's fourth addition is going to, approval recommended by Planning Commission, and it's zoning change from multi-dominant residential to limited commercial on lot two, block one, and request to repeal and reestablish conditional overlay at lots one through four, block one. First reading of the rezoning. Don Crest to explain this as well.
Yes, sir. The property, as you see, is located on 5634 Fourth Avenue South. There are three lots that are zone limited commercial. The one lot there is indicated is MR3. That's the one that's going to be, proposed to be changed to limited commercial. That'd be this lot here. And then there's also a conditional overlay over all four of these lots, and the applicant has proposed a modification of that. The original CO on the subject property was intended for commercial development. However, the applicant has more detailed development plan for the area. The proposed CO maintains much of the original CO requirements while seeking to simplify and reduce ambiguity within the development. So the proposed CO allows portable signs until June 30, 2018. It also removes the requirement that ground floor facades that front public streets have arcades, display areas, entry areas, or other such features along no less than 60% of their horizontal length, and replaces it with the requirement that only ground floor facades that face Veterans Boulevard, which is on the west side there, would have to have these requirements. The project was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on June 6, 2017. The applicant's representative, John Eunice of Eagle Bridge Development, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. There's the visual there of the, without the zoning overlay. The recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation.
On your vote was 4-1. It didn't seem like a whole Planning Commission, if it was only a 4-1 vote, is that right?
This one was, this one was 6-0.
That's the next one.
The next one is 4-1.
Oh, okay.
I will address that, sir.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this? Anyone wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg, Gareg. No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gareg?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item G, Urban Plains by Brant with multiple lots, was recommended for approval by Planning Commission, and it's zoning change with a repeal and establish conditional overlay on multiple lots in the Brant area, which is in your packet, and a first reading of rezoning ordinance. I assume, John, you'll show those to us in the public?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So the map on the screen there, Commissioners, shows the numerous properties. They're all owned by the same owner. They are outlined in black, scattered through the, the Urban Plains area there. The applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment in order to repeal the existing conditional overlay, which is ordinance 4978, and establish a new conditional overlay on the subject property. The proposed conditional overlay would modify the restrictions on the placement of loading and unloading areas, building service entrances, loading docks, overhead doors, and ground level HVAC units, and eliminate the requirement that parking shall be located in the side and rear yards. The modifications proposed by the applicant are intended to allow greater flexibility of design for future development on the vacant properties within Urban Plains. And again, Commissioners, these properties are all vacant and undeveloped at this time. The project was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on June 6, 2017. As the mayor stated previously, the vote was 4-1. There were six Commissioners at that meeting. Commissioner Bruce declared conflict of interest and recused herself from voting. Commissioner Schneider voted nay. He did not have any specific comment on his vote, sir. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is stated on your screen, or stated in your staff report and shown on your screen. The applicant's representative, Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brian Patengale with Houston Engineering, the representative of the project. Essentially, as Donald explained, this is a, allowing for some flexibility. The contractor has developed a concept on several of the large lots that have double frontage, and based on the current conditional overlay, that concept really isn't possible with the double frontage lots. So they're just looking for a little flexibility in where they can place some of the parking. On that, they've already run into a few of that problems, and a few of the developments that have occurred recently. So they're just looking for a little flexibility as they move forward with this large development that they're planning. I'd be happy to have any good questions anyone has.
Any questions, Commissioner? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, how do we know, or do you know, how much, how much, there was one citizen spoke out about the concentration of apartments, but I'm trying to sort out how many apartments could we conceivably end up with or not in this development? It's, because it's allowable, but, but it's, it's gray area.
The project they're currently looking at is mostly commercial-based along veterans. I don't remember the exact zoning. It's commercial.
So we can take a look at this. Go back here. So again, the properties outlined in the pink here are all a, you can't see it. In, in the pink here are all the limited commercial, sir.
So at this point, it's not likely there will be big apartment developments, or?
No, the current development is more, is geared toward commercial and limited in those natures.
Mr. Patengale, if I may add a comment. Commissioners, in the limited commercial zone, development of residential uses in that zone would require a conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission. So there would be another step in that approval.
So there's a question now, there's no apartments going in these zones?
They can only be approved with a conditional use permit. We don't have any applications for that, right?
Yeah. Nicole, did you want to say something?
Just to clarify, in case there's any confusion, what's in front of you tonight doesn't affect whether or not they can have apartments or not. Those are allowed anyway through conditions, and so what's in front of you tonight is just details about the ordinance itself, the design standards.
Okay. Is there anyone else, President, who wishes to speak? Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Grinberg? Is there a second?
Second.
Pepcorn, second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will agree, in the Sanford area, there's just such density of apartments. I don't know, maybe you can answer that. Was it something that we, it seems like our code maybe, it doesn't seem like there's a good mix there. And so was there something that happened, but it just, when you look at that area, it just seems, it's, it's striking how much more.
But a lot of them are West Fargo, aren't they, Jim? On the other side of Veterans?
There's some, there's some large ones on the west side of Veterans. I think the developer originally felt this would all be commercial, but, you know, there simply isn't demand for that much commercial. The demand has been for more apartments, so they've kind of redone some of the zoning in the interior of that section towards multifamily housing. I think in part is a result of the Sanford Hospital being nearby and people wanting to probably live a little bit closer to that facility.
But can I add one more thing? But it was my understanding that you have to have a mix. Even if, if there are apartments there, don't you have to have some other types of, or is that just how it is? If they want to build apartments?
Well, it's all up to the, you know, what the city approves for a land use plan, and this land use plan has undergone some changes over the last, you know, 10, 15 years since it was first created. They had always envisioned some housing within this, you know, half-section of land, as well as the half-section of land of the south. We did see some more single-family to the south of 32nd, so there are some single-family neighborhoods there, wherever the, kind of the land along the arterial road, such as Veterans, 45th and 32nd, tends to be either, you know, commercial with some apartments behind it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. A question, Mr. Gilmore, and this isn't specifically about this project. It's more of a general one, but this triggers my question. With the advent of, of no-sort recycling and the intent to go more toward commercial and toward multi, toward apartment complexes and so on, do we have discussions at the planning level going forward where we make that part of the mix? Where we set that expectation that, that we're, we're expecting that developers will start working that into their formula so that we are prepared for? And because we hear the arguments that, well, they have to give up a parking space or two, to accommodate recycling, and yet I think from this point on, now that we have these capabilities, I'm hoping that that's part of our discussions as a rule?
I mean, it hasn't been, I think it's a good idea for us to take a look at that, work with Public Works to see if we can get some of these recycling containers in, in near apartment buildings. I think one of the reasons they've kept the drop sites is that many people in apartments, you know, don't have that big blue container that, that I have. And so I don't know if there's anyone here from Public Works who would want to address what they're working on. A lot of the apartment complexes are also served by private haulers, not necessarily the city of Fargo. So, yeah, I don't know if we could require them to have those types of facilities or not. Certainly something to look at.
Mr. Gareg?
Yeah, just to address John's concern, we are able at this point to service apartments with no-sort recycling if they so want it. I'd like to see something where we have a voluntary ability to do that, so we can make it easier for them somehow through zoning or whatever else to have those spots available to have those big bins. So we agree on the end game. I think we might agree on the way to get there, or disagree on the way to get there, but I think we can have a discussion about how we, how we get to that endpoint, without necessarily making a new law or new ordinance, saying you have to. I think if we tell them how it could benefit them, and it will, then we could have people voluntarily do that. So making it easier, I think, through ordinances or whatever else, I think would be a good thing. But, yeah, we can, we can today service those, those apartment buildings with no-sort recycling if they're giving us a spot.
It, it may be in their best interest to do it, because many of the commercial haulers are, it's a volume-based in terms of how much trash they're taking out of the area. So the extent that it could be recycled, that would seem like it would save the private hauler money.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gareg?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item H, renewal plan amendment for CE1 tax increment financial district, First Avenue South on the south, Broadway on the west, Fourth Street on the east, and First Avenue North on the north. Jim Gilmore to explain.
This tax increment financing district was set up quite a few years ago to help with the development of the Dakota Bank and Will's Fargo facility. I don't have a lot of history on that, but in 1999, the district was amended to add two activities. One was the construction of the Island Park ramp. The other was to try to acquire and clear part of the 400 block of NP Avenue and spur some redevelopment in that, that area. The Island Park ramp was constructed, and the bonds on that are now paid off. The acquisition redevelopment of the property, those property owners were not interested in having their property acquired, and so that activity never took place. This amendment would do two things. First, it would allocate the money that is still in the TIF fund. When the bonds were paid off, the remaining balance was $1,118,000. There are some activities that are needed within this district, and they're kind of fit with the, the parking issues that we have in this area. And so I discussed with the Finance Department, the Finance Committee, about doing an amendment to use these funds to take care of these needs, and then go ahead and end the TIF district. The TIF district can continue as long as we have debt, and the only real debt we have right now is to, to purchase the land under the Island Park ramp. When that ramp was constructed, we just leased the land until the year 2020, and we have to buy it. At that point, the banks have been, seemed like they'd be willing to sell it to us earlier. So the, this amendment, what I've proposed here is, first of all, there are some repairs needed to the Island Park ramp. About every five years, we take a look at, trying to get cracks sealed and take care of coatings on the surface of the ramp. It's about $200,000 worth needed at this time. Secondly, the early purchase of the land, it's just for planning purposes. I'm using the number 450,000. We would actually have an appraisal done and try to work that out, but until we have money budgeted, I haven't gotten that far in the process. Third, parking control equipment. Right now, it's, it's only for monthly parkers, and if we could get some different parking control equipment, we could charge hourly for parking in there. I don't know if there's a big demand, but occasionally Sanford has some special events in their offices and, and has been interested in some short-term parking. And finally, then the Ground Transportation Center, another parking facility within the TIF district. That's been identified, there's renovations needed there. That's an older facility, and a proposal for remaining money be used towards some of those repairs. The, and then finally, once these funds would be allocated, we direct the county to end the TIF district. The mayor asked me to put together some of these, these charts that shows the base value when the district was created was 2.8 million. Now it's 21 million. The property taxes that have been paid by these properties have been 282,000 a year, but of that, 37,000 goes to the taxing jurisdictions, and the other money has gone into the TIF fund. And then so finally can see, as this district closes, this tax increment at 245,000, this is how much each taxing jurisdiction would get, with the schools getting, I'm having a hard time reading that, 127,000. The county and the city is getting 43,000, and the parks at 24,000. So I've attached a resolution to adopt the, this TIF plan amendment. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this amendment? Has anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Gareg first.
Jim, when was this originally voted on to end, and when was it planned to end if this amendment is approved?
When would it end?
When was it originally planned to end? And when was it, when is it going to end if this is approved?
I'm not sure. I think in 1999, it was probably going to end at that, about at that point, but I'd have to go back and look in the records. I know it had a balance at that point, and I don't think we had any other debt at that point, but I'd, I'm just not sure if there was other debt in 1999 that was, needed to be paid.
And then if this amendment is approved, when are we planning on closing this district?
This amendment would close it this year, so if we don't close it, then this 245,000 comes to the city. If we do close it, it'll go to the taxing jurisdictions.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gilmore, I'll ask a question, then I'll follow up if it's fitting. The, could you explain, you mentioned repairing surface and cracks with the $200,000 repair needed at the parking ramp. Could you go into a little more detail, or is that about it? It's surface repair and cracks?
It's primarily those kind of cracks that form. The surface repair is, that particular ramp has a membrane on it. It's like a sealer, and over the years, particularly at the corners, that membrane wears down and gets down to the con, closer to the concrete, and so the sealer is, is put on. I guess any parking structure, almost any building, needs some repairs from, from time to time, and so, but the big costs are making sure that those cracks are sealed, so you don't get leaks into the concrete, and making sure that this membrane is taken care of.
So if I might continue, Mayor. Several months ago, I received a communication from a very prominent name in the, in the, in the building construction world, the family's name, and the concern he raised was that in this exact, this ramp itself, that we're allowing the contractor, or the contractor is simply using salt for snow removal rather than removing the snow, and his concerns were the integrity of the concrete. And I got the impression back then that it's, the contractor will watch it, but this is exactly what I think he's getting to, maybe, is how we allow contractors to remove snow, and if they're going in and spraying brine or salt water or salt, it's going to deteriorate the cement concrete, and it's going to cost the taxpayer ongoingly. And I'm just curious if, if we're addressing that, or how we can address that, or how we can, you know, make sure that the integrity of the structures lasts, lasts as long as it can, and also reduce cost to the people.
One of the things we try to work, you know, the contractor's not supposed to be using metal blades on the, particularly on the membrane, so that's something we watch for. You know, as it gets to be icy conditions, we're concerned about people slipping and falling, so some, you know, salt is certainly used in the winter. What's most important is that we wash that down in the spring, that there's a good wash down to get that stuff off before it, you know, seeps into the concrete. But, but certainly, as with our, with our roads, that can have a, you know, deteriorating effect on it. So really washing down, not storing, you know, the, the, the snow on the top of the ramp, trying to get that off as soon as possible is important. And so we work with interstate parking to try to, you know, maintain that facility so that it'll last a long time, and that does include, you know, being careful as we remove snow and, and not using any more salt than we need to.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gareg?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Item I, renewal plan amendment for the Great Northern Depot Tax Increment Finance District. Small parcel will be moved from the district 40, 412 Fifth Street North. Jim Gilmore again to explain. North. Jim Gilmer again to explain.
This TIF district was set up sort of a more of a one-lot TIF district that included the Great Northern Depot. There were some incentives that the city had, and the city has some debt that's paying off this district. So, it's getting paid down each year. However, after the Great Northern Depot acquired this property, there's a small segment that was sold off to another property owner to the south. That small parcel and the rest of the block to the south has been subsequently included in another TIF district that you approved in two thousand and fifteen. So, this amendment would eliminate that overlap so it's clear what's in which, or that this parcel is not in two different TIF districts. It kind of creates, you know, a problem for trying to manage that. And so, this is simply a boundary amendment that removes a small parcel of a parking lot from an existing TIF district.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this amendment? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second. And any discussion? Tony Gerg?
Jim, so this is amending it to make it smaller, basically?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, for for note, is this the first time after subsequent legislative action this year that that we're formally notifying the county and the parks and the school districts of such actions? Because I see a letter attached to to these.
No, it's not. I believe that was a change made about two sessions ago, required us to notify all the taxing jurisdictions of these hearings. So, anytime you have acted on a TIF district in the last four years, similar notice has gone to the schools, the county and the parks.
Any new laws would go into effect August first.
Okay.
Very good. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gerg?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Any other business? Mr. Grinberg?
I would just, it was a year ago, Commissioner Strand and I were elected. We are now officially starting our second year of our term. And I just wish to make it known that I really enjoyed working with all of you as elected officials and the fine, dedicated staff we have. I've learned a lot. And we've got a great thing going in City Fargo, and I've really enjoyed it. So, I just wanted to, at least from one of the two of us that have just joined, wanted just to express my feelings.
We should have holidays more often. Commissioner Strand, I know you won't have have the last word.
You know, I I I I can chime in on that and the joy it is, the honor it is to serve people. And what a good diverse commission we have with working things toward the middle constantly. I think that's healthy. But I'd like to note, make note of and acknowledge April Walker and her her leaving the city's service. She's just absolutely been stellar. And her performance is exemplary. And and her her skill sets and her capabilities. And she's like a walking encyclopedia. So, I hope she knows how sincerely we appreciate her her public service from all of us, and that that's a, and we wish her the best.
Thank you, John, for that comment. Mike and Bruce are going to meet with her next week, and we'll have them carry that message to her as well. And maybe we all, as a commission, feel very strongly. She certainly served us very, very well. I also have Commissioner Gerg up here demonstrating the effects of sunlight on the face. So, I just, I want you to be aware, melanoma still is out there. So, is there a motion adjourned? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.